One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Can we begin with roll call, please?
Councilmember Shumers.
Here.
Detterman.
Here.
Seeley.
Here.
Davis.
Here.
Obrin.
Here.
Musman.
Here.
Kearns.
Here.
Councilmember Detterman?
Thank your honor. Improvements of the regular city council committee of the whole in special city council meetings of September 23rd, 2025, and the special city council meeting of September 25th, 2025, and they be approved as published on October 7th, 2025. Move they be accepted as presented?
Second. With a motion and a second, any discussion on the minutes? Can we have roll call, please?
Councilmember Shumers.
Yes.
Detterman.
Yes.
Seeley.
Yes.
Davis.
Yes.
Obrin.
Yes.
Musman.
Yes.
Kearns.
Yes.
All right, we have a proclamation from our community development director, Tammy Johnson.
Mayor and council, I have a proclamation recognizing that October is code compliance month, whereas our code enforcement officers provide for a safety, health, and welfare of our citizens living in our community through the enforcement of buildings, zoning, housing, and property maintenance and other codes and ordinances, and whereas our code enforcement officers are dedicated, well-trained, and highly responsible individuals who take their jobs seriously, are proud of their department and our city, and are committed to promoting life safety and improving neighborhood aesthetics in the course of their daily jobs. Our code enforcement officers have a challenging and demanding job where they are constantly in the public eye, and whereas our code enforcement officers interact with residents, property owners, city officials, boards and commissions to ensure city codes and to keep our city up to standards clear of blight, nuisance, and public safety hazards, and whereas the quality of life and safety of all of our residents depend on the enforcement of the city municipal codes.
Now, therefore, I, Scott Madison, Mayor of the City of Clinton, Iowa, do hereby recognize that October is code compliance month and thank our code enforcement officers for all they do for the city, and witness whereof, I hereunto set my hand and cause the seal of the City of Clinton to be affixed this 14th day of October, 2025.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, move into public hearings. We'll convene a public hearing concerning the sale of city-owned property at 655 First Avenue. Have we heard anything in the clerk's office?
No, your honor.
Is there any citizens that are in the room or online that would like to address this public hearing? Okay. Is there any council members that would like to address the public hearing? All right, hearing none, we will close the public hearing. Councilmember Musman?
Thank you, your honor. I have a resolution authorizing sale of 655 First Avenue to Colleen Snodgrass Hansen for $300. I move that it be adopted as presented.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Can we have roll call, please?
Councilmember Shumers.
Yes.
Detterman.
Yes.
Seeley.
Yes.
Davis.
Yes.
Obrin.
Yes.
Musman.
Yes.
Kearns.
Yes.
We'll convene a public hearing concerning the proposed conveyance of an electric line easement to Interstate Power and Light Company at 1319 Springdale Drive. Have we heard anything in the clerk's office?
No, your honor.
Is there any citizens that are in the room that would like to address this public hearing? Any council members that would like to address the public hearing? Hearing none, we will close the public hearing. Councilmember Seeley?
Thank your honor. I have a resolution authorizing underground electric easement agreement with Interstate Power and Light Company for improvements on city parcel at 1319 Springdale Drive. I move this be adopted as read.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion on this? Can we have roll call, please?
Councilmember Shumers.
Yes.
Detterman.
Yes.
Seeley.
Yes.
Davis.
Yes.
Obrin.
Yes.
Musman.
Yes.
Kearns.
Yes.
All right, moving to the audience comments section, I have two yellow cards here that have items. First one, Travis Winter.
Good evening, your honor, council members. Travis Winter, 2328 North H Street, Clinton. Over the weekend, I had a dog that showed up at my house and didn't want to leave, and it stayed there for quite a while, and then I posted it on Facebook, and no response, so I decided to take it up to the main society to find out that there's no outside cages, and a big note on the door that says you can no longer take animals up there from the city. So I took it back to the house and had to decide what I was going to do with it at that point. Luckily, the owner came, came out and came and picked it up. But my concern is, is if the city doesn't do something quick with where they're going to house animals, surrounding cities, the county, Comanche, and DeWitt, that all have contracts with the main society, they're all going to end up with our animals. And we also, you know, it's very frustrating to have an animal and not have a place to take it. You know, I could have turned my eye and said, you know, wander off to the next neighbors and let them, let them deal with it, but, you know, as a city, we need to figure it out. We need to figure it out fairly quick. Thank you.
Thank you, Travis. All right, Celeste Robbins.
I have to adjust it down because I'm a lot shorter. Celeste Robbins, 2460 Barker Street. Good evening, council. I'm here today to speak for someone who cannot be here themselves. It's my sister Margie. She has to work today, but she asked when she found out that I was here, that I could please pass along her gratitude to the City of Clinton for their support of the synergy program that she is a part of, and she is currently helping plan the downtown Christmas walk. So she asked that I invite all of you to the downtown Christmas walk on Friday, December 5th, from 4:00 p.m. to 7:00 p.m. It will be in downtown Clinton with lots of fun activities, including a Christmas tree lighting. She said we're hoping to have lots of families, and we hope to have lots of people bring their families to come and enjoy the start of the holiday season, and she would love to see city council there.
All right, thank you. I got my invitation. Tough crowd. All right. Anybody else that would like to address the council on something that's not on the agenda this evening? All right, move to consent agenda. Councilmember Davis?
Thank you, your honor. I'd like to make a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented on the attachment.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion on the consent agenda?
I'd like to poll, your honor, poll 7BN.
Okay. No, BN.
BN. BN.
There's a lot of them on there today.
Yeah.
All right, anything else for consent agenda from council? All right, hearing none. Can we have a roll call on the balance of the consent agenda, please?
Councilmember Shumers.
Yes.
Detterman.
Yes.
Seeley.
Yes.
Davis.
Yes.
Obrin.
Yes.
Musman.
Yes.
Kearns.
Yes.
Councilmember Seeley?
Thank your honor. I'll make a motion to receive, approve, and place on file claims listings one through five.
A second.
We have a motion and a second for the claims listings. Is there any discussion on those? All right, can we have roll call, please?
Councilmember Shumers.
Yes.
Detterman.
Yes.
Seeley.
Yes.
Davis.
Yes.
Obrin.
Yes.
Musman.
Yes.
Kearns.
Yes.
Councilmember Kearns?
Thank your honor. I have a motion to approve the mayor's recommendations to boards and commissions.
We have a motion and a second. Could you read those for us, please?
I can. We have one appointment for the ADA Advisory Appointments Commission. It's Nancy Springer. She will be, she's filling an unexpired term. We have a capital improvement commission, committee. Andy Sikolovich with Grow Clinton will continue. The Housing Board of Appeals, we have two reappointments, Tammy Evansberger and Charlene Nicoletto, both will fill a six-year term. Human Rights Commission, Rebecca Quint to fill an unexpired term. The Neighborhood Improvement Committee, we have Dennis Lawver is being reappointed until, for a six-year term. Traffic Study Commission, we have an appointment of Bill Geltz to fill an unexpired term, and the Tree Commission, John Nichols will fill a three-year term.
All right, thank you. Any discussion on these appointments? Just for the current vacancies, I believe we did get a Housing Board of Appeals applicant, so that'll be reviewed at the next meeting, but still looking for the other seats if anybody has anybody in there.
A human rights one, too.
Oh, human rights as well, sorry. So if anybody knows anyone for the traffic study, that's, or vehicle for hire, but traffic study is what we're looking for, so. All right, can we have roll call, please?
Councilmember Shumers.
Yes.
Detterman.
Yes.
Seeley.
Yes.
Davis.
Yes.
Obrin.
Yes.
Musman.
Yes.
Kearns.
Yes.
Councilmember Davis?
Thank you, your honor. I have a resolution approving an agreement for audit services for FY '25 with Bar and Company LLC. I move that it be received as, yeah. Adopted as presented.
There you go.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion on this? All right, can we have roll call, please?
Councilmember Shumers.
Yes.
Detterman.
Yes.
Seeley.
Yes.
Davis.
Yes.
Obrin.
Yes.
Musman.
Yes.
Kearns.
Yes.
Councilmember Obrin?
Thank your honor. I have a resolution approving payment to USA Concerts Peachtree for the 2025 Tailgate and Tallboy Summer Music Festival. Move this resolution be adopted as presented.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion on this? All right, can we have roll call, please?
Councilmember Shumers.
Yes.
Detterman.
Yes.
Seeley.
Yes.
Davis.
Yes.
Obrin.
Yes.
Musman.
Yes.
Kearns.
Yes.
Councilmember Kearns?
Thank your honor. I have a resolution approving a full-time infrastructure and system operations specialist position for the information technology department. I move it be adopted as presented.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Discussion on this?
This is moving someone that's already hired with the city from the Streets Department to be full-time in IT. So it's not necessarily a full, a new full-time position.
Well, it would be, though.
Well, it's a new full-time position, but he's already employed.
Right.
And when we had the discussion at Finance Committee, we're basically splitting this up between funds, so this doesn't all come out of general fund. It'll be proprietary fund covering as well, and he has a lot of missions coming up, starting off with the MTA, and then who knows, lots of stuff, so. And it's a very high number that, of dollars we say, but we don't want to tell them publicly because then they want more, so we just say congratulations. Couldn't go to better guy.
All right, any other discussion on this? Can we have roll call, please?
Councilmember Shumers.
Yes.
Detterman.
Yes.
Seeley.
Yes.
Davis.
Yes.
Obrin.
Yes.
Musman.
Yes.
Kearns.
Yes.
Councilmember Musman?
Thank your honor. I have a resolution setting a public hearing on a proposed sale of city-owned property at 405 Seventh Avenue South. I move that it be adopted as presented.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion on this? Can we have roll call, please?
Councilmember Shumers.
Yes.
Detterman.
Yes.
Seeley.
Yes.
Davis.
Yes.
Obrin.
Yes.
Musman.
Yes.
Kearns.
Yes.
Councilmember Shumers?
Your honor, I have a resolution setting a public hearing on the proposed authorization of acquisition of property and property interest by the use of eminent domain for the Bluff Boulevard reconstruction project. I move the resolution be adopted as read.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Discussion on this? The eminent domain word.
Yeah.
Words concern me a little bit.
Second word.
Yeah, can we go through that and?
Yep, that'd be perfect.
Good evening, mayor and council. Jason Kraft, city engineer. And so whenever we do a federally funded public project, we start off with going through the final design and identifying property acquisition necessary, and I think, as I sit here, city attorney Pat O'Connell may be better, better off explaining this all to you, but hopefully it's voluntary, the property acquisition. On this project, there were two acquisitions of entire properties. Those went pretty well. Everyone's happy, moved into a nice, maybe even an upgrade across town, and then we had a bunch of easements. We had, I think, over 120 temporary easements and 25 or 30 partial acquisitions, just slivers along the backside of a proposed sidewalk along Bluff Boulevard. So every property we touched with this project, because it's a narrow right-of-way, we had to acquire a piece of property to build the property, build the project as per the design. Tried not to. It's not our goal to impact any private property, and most of the time, we don't have to, but on this project, it was necessary. You've got a bluff there and a pretty tight, tight area to get three lanes or two lanes in a median and a wide sidewalk, so it was necessary. We had had multiple public meetings. We authorized the voluntary acquisition at a previous council meeting earlier, I think it was last fall, and those, all those conversations went really well. We didn't really have any, some of them took longer than others. You see that, like, right at the last possible minute, a bunch of them are on the consent agenda tonight, but we ended up with zero contentious acquisitions. The use of eminent domain is just necessary to make sure that our project then progresses planned, and on these three properties, as you see, one of them's in a state, so that complicated things. The attorney was just very upfront and said that it's going to take a long time to close this, so we thought it'd be quicker to go through with eminent domain rather than wait on that estate to close. That could take a year. And then the other one is in a foreclosure. That's the Planet Home Lending property, and then the other one at 411 North Bluff. That property owner is agreeable to everything. We just, we're having trouble with partial mortgage releases for the temporary easement, so I never would have guessed that it would have went this well, and I'm sure that everyone's going to be, I know, I know that everyone is okay with the way things worked out. Every property owner we met with and purchased property from is happy. We met them all as they came in here and signed their easement documents. So these three are just fairly procedural, and we've had no contentious acquisitions whatsoever, which is highly unusual.
Good to know. How has it been? How has communication been? Have you been able to communicate with anyone on the foreclosed property?
Hmm, they're in, like, Connecticut.
Yeah.
So it's really hard to.
Yeah, it's not a local lender.
Not really, no.
I actually had no idea this backed all the way down to Bluff, but it sure does.
Yeah, back to the lane. And then our, our city attorney, I'll mention that there's a, there's a gal in Pat's office that, without her, we probably have a list about 30 properties, but she tracks down these partial mortgage releases, and she pesters these banks until they kind of cooperate with us. It's tough. She's got a tough job, Michelle over at Lynch Dallas, but she, these were the only couple here that she couldn't, couldn't handle, and it wasn't for lack of trying, for sure. So, yeah, we've had many communications with all these, all these, these people here. In fact, 325 South Bluff, this is like the third time it's changed hands. We had an agreement with the previous owner, and then they sold it, so. This is eminent domain, which is not, you know, it's not a forceful eminent domain. It's a kind of a voluntary eminent domain, per se.
Okay.
All right.
Can you just quickly explain the difference between a temporary easement and a property acquisition, just for the general public here?
Yeah, so the temporary easement is where the city's contractor. Is that my phone? No, it's where the city's contractor grades outside of the property lines and onto private property, just for the purposes of matching the topography of the lawn or sidewalk to the public project. And it's temporary, so it's only a year or two window that we have to do that work. And so that's what the majority of these acquisitions were, along Bluff Boulevard. Every property had a temporary easement, and we're going to continue to have public meetings even before the bid letting in February and in next spring. It's a, probably a three-year project, so it's, there's been a lot of public communication with everyone along there, and I think we have a good relationship, hopefully, with everyone along that corridor. Oh, partial acquisition. Yes, that's just where you have to move the right-of-way line to pave like a sidewalk or a bike trail or part of a curve that we're realigning. So if any city infrastructure that the public will need to use for the, for the long term, if that goes over the property line, then we have to acquire a small piece of property. And those are usually only like anywhere from a few inches to 10 feet, maybe, and minimal impacts. Typically, those are very minimal impacts. So that's, and then, like I said, there's only two, two acquisitions where we had to acquire the whole property. Those were done last year. That was at Fourth Avenue and Bluff on the northeast corner, and then one in the 300 block of South Bluff.
Okay.
All righty.
All right. Any other questions on this item or discussion?
Thanks, Jason.
All right, can we have roll call, please?
Councilmember Shumers.
Yes.
Detterman.
Yes.
Seeley.
Yes.
Davis.
Yes.
Obrin.
Yes.
Musman.
Yes.
Kearns.
Yes.
Councilmember Davis?
Thank you, your honor. I have a resolution approving update to the city's owner occupied roof rehabilitation program administrative plan. I move that it be adopted as presented.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion on this? We just added this one paragraph, right?
Yep.
Okay.
Tammy was in discussions with ECIA, and sometimes what happens, ECIA will be doing Healthy Homes, a project, and this was kind of ironic. It's like, the part they were doing would be like the reinforcing the roof, and then we were doing the roof, and the timelines don't match. So as you know, you have to reinforce the roof first before you can put a roof on. So we thought this would be a good segue to be able to put this in here on this, but also if the roof exceeds the scope of the city's roof grant, we have the flexibility now by adding this. If you guys approve, that the property owner can apply for additional grants which may qualify. So we didn't want to have like a partial completion of a project, whereas if we could get a couple more dollars, we could actually finish it right, get it done right, because we don't want to just Band-Aid stuff that already has other issues that they find. And they do find, it's really good. They do find out other stuff when they start digging around and taking the roof off, so.
All right.
I noticed we took out the, all contractors submitting bids must also include a non collusion affidavit with their submissions. I don't even know what that means, but can somebody explain it to me?
Oh, yeah.
It was left over from ECIA when this, when we kind of took their administrative plan. It was just left in there. We've never done it, so in talking with them, we don't need to do it, so we just removed it. We haven't been doing it, so.
Because I didn't know what it was.
Yeah.
All right.
All right, thanks, Tammy.
Any other discussion on this? Can we have roll call, please?
Councilmember Shumers.
Yes.
Detterman.
Yes.
Seeley.
Yes.
Davis.
Yes.
Obrin.
Yes.
Musman.
Yes.
Kearns.
Yes.
Councilmember Shumers?
I have a resolution approving and authorizing the mayor to sign the sewer user wastewater services agreement with Iowa American Water Company for the Lowmore Collection System. I move the resolution be adopted as read.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Do you want to run through this?
Sure. I was going to have Emily come up and talk. I'm kidding, just kidding. No, first, I'd kind of show, have a shout-out for Iowa American Water. We've been working on this for a while, so it's, we went back and forth, and I think we have a very good contract. For those that know that this is the next step in the process of them procuring the collection system of Lowmore, and this is the first time that we could find in the history of Iowa that a private utility would send to a public utility. So we kind of had to start from scratch in developing this. Thanks to Anita Dalton as well, helped a lot on this, as well as making sure that the Ts are crossed and Is are dotted, and also thanks to Timothy Whipple out of Allers Cooney for this. He's a utility person, but I think after going back and forth, I think we came to a pretty good agreement. Do you agree? Emily agrees for the record, so. And so I think they have a few more steps left in the process, but this way we'll be set up. There is a little diagram, if you guys are ever interested, to go down on 44th Avenue South to know where yours, mine, and ours, where their pipes will meet our pipe, just for fun. Whoa, I don't know what happened there. Wow, how'd I do that? That was like magic. I don't know what happened.
It's been doing some weird stuff.
Oh, here we go. So anyway, this is very hard to see, and I apologize, but this is the rail park, which looks really cool now, more so, but this is where Rail One is and where Nevada Rail was, and you can see where the two pipes coincide is here. And then we also came up with a very good way to be able to measure effectively, because the Lowmore wastewater will actually come down Lowmore's pipe, meet at ours here, and then come down to the end where this is South 54th and 44th Avenue South, and that's where our pump station is. And actually, inside the pump station, we have two different pipes. One pipe is going to be for the industrial side within the rail park, and then the other pipe will be set aside for Lowmore for their volume to be able to send to us, so.
Any other discussion on this? Can we have roll call, please?
Councilmember Shumers.
Yes.
Detterman.
Yes.
Seeley.
Yes.
Davis.
Yes.
Obrin.
Yes.
Musman.
Yes.
Kearns.
Yes.
Councilmember Detterman?
Thank your honor. My resolution requests an assignment of county held tax certificate. Move that be adopted as presented.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion on this? Can?
No, but, yeah, we made good progress, I think. I thought.
Yeah, yes. Good progress.
Yep. Everything's taken care of?
Yes. We're now a proud owner of, yes. And for those that are, you know, listening and out there watching, so this is basically, before you get to Second Avenue South, it's been there for quite a while. It's, Tammy and her team's been watching over this, but we've had barricades outside of it, and thanks to the council, we're going to move forward on procuring this and then demoing it, and hopefully then making some grid space for something else to go in there, and then meanwhile, we're going to be able to cover some of this cost or some other actions that we move forward with on another property, so. I can't remember what Tammy always refers to as the building.
Union supply.
Union supply, yes, for back in the day.
Nicer name than I thought it was going to.
All right, can we have roll call, please?
Councilmember Shumers.
Yes.
Detterman.
Yes.
Seeley.
Yes.
Davis.
Yes.
Obrin.
Yes.
Musman.
Yes.
Kearns.
Yes.
Councilmember Seeley?
Thank your honor. I'll make a motion that we can, move the council considering ordinance for the third time.
Please read the title.
Oh, okay. In ordinance amending city code chapter 159.046 supplemental regulations[1617.20]